All right. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This message of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we've come for you this morning and we just prayed you for the blessings you've put in our lives. We pray you for the sunshine that we see. But, Lord, we also pray you for the freedom that you've given us. And, Lord, as we come together to meet, I pray that you give this council wisdom in all they do and all they say for the betterment of our city and the betterment of its citizens. And we pray that they hear that.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting, work session, and city council meeting held on March 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the weeks of February 27th through March 5th and March 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Ms. Laura Murray, come up, please. I have a proclamation. Whereas, colon cancer is one of only a few cancers that can be prevented because of colorectal cancer screening allows doctors to find and remove hidden growths called polyps before they can become cancerous. Removing polyps can prevent cancer altogether. Yet colorectal cancer remains the third leading cause of cancer death in both men and women in the United States. Each year, tens of thousands of lives are lost to this disease. Despite these staggering statistics, colorectal cancer is one of the most preventable, treatable, and beatable forms of cancer, especially when it's caught early. Wider use of proven screening tests could save more than half of these lives yearly. Simply aging can make you at more risk for developing cancer, colon cancer. An early-stage colon cancer doesn't usually cause symptoms, but there are steps you can take to reduce your risk for the disease. Once you turn 50, it is important that you talk to your doctor about getting screened regularly for colon cancer. Talk to your doctor sooner if you have a family history of disease or other conditions that puts you at increased risk. Talk to your friends and family about the importance of getting screened for colorectal cancer and other ways to reduce the risk of this disease, such as not smoking, maintaining a healthy weight, exercising, eating less red meat, and consuming alcohol in moderation or not at all. Visit www.cancer.org or www.ncct.org for information and links to resources. Each time you see the blue star, remember and share the facts. Colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, and beatable. We ask you to help Gaston, Alabama fight this disease by proclaiming March as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month and encourage the residents of Gaston to help to reduce the number of lives lost to colon cancer each year in Etowah County. Etowah County raises thousands of dollars at the Relay for Life. Join us on May 16th, survivors, caregivers, and all of our wonderful volunteers at Crossport Community Church with your community to celebrate the efforts of conquering cancer. I can tell you, the day before, the night before, it's worse than the actual procedure. If you've ever been there, you know what I'm talking about. You have to drink all this stuff. But, the other thing, I've had checkup, but the other thing is, I had a friend, just for an example, and I had a checkup, this is 10 years ago, I guess, or something, I don't know. But anyway, and I said something to him, and he was 59. He said, "Well, no, I never had that." And I said, "You need to go get that checked." Well, I'm not having any trouble. Well, he did, and he had infection. They took out 18 inches of his colon, but he didn't have to have a bag, but he'd never had any symptoms. So, checkups are very valuable. I do want to recognize Mr. Jimmy Conwell. We're glad to have you with us today. He's a former fullback, and he had one of the best coaches around. And he did work for us for a good while, and he retired again. So, we're glad to have you here, Jimmy.
It wasn't you, was it, ma'am? Definitely is good to see Jimmy. Good to see you again. All right.
All right, unfinished business? We have nine today. Number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located off East Broad Street in District 2. The owners have requested these three vacant parcels behind 118 East Broad Street be rezoned from I-1 Light Industry District to B-2 General Business District to make the zoning in the area consistent and to permit future commercial use. The planning commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it on next week. Number 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 319 Albany Avenue in District 1, Justin Shane Jenkins being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on up. Yes, ma'am. If you will, ma'am, just state your name and address.
My name is Tastadee Jenkins. Shane Jenkins and I are in the middle of a divorce, and Judge Kemberly has granted me possessory interest in the property until our final hearing. I don't know where that puts me in this situation. The deed is in Justin Shane Jenkins' name. It is not in my name. I'm mainly here today just to see what I need to do in order for this not to be, you know, my responsibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say you was here today to make sure that this wasn't your responsibility? If anything happens, this property is not your responsibility. Is that correct?
I don't know if, like, what Judge Kemberly has written inside here, if this was in my responsibility, because the lady here, she is the one who has come about the house. She said that it was August 14th, was it?
Well, I've been working on it seven years straight. August 14th, 2014 is when I started working on it.
So, I just don't know, you know, where that puts me as far as my divorce. This was not, this was signed on January the 9th. So, I'm just here to, I'm not, I do not intend on keeping this house when I did it before. I don't think Judge Kemberly will make me keep the house since it is in Shane Jenkins' name. And so, I just wanted to make sure that I was in the responsibility of the house.
Lee?
Who's your lawyer?
Sean Malone.
Okay. You need to have Sean Malone contact me, the city attorney, or Brian Harbison, okay? Because he should be able to answer that question for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak? Sorry, does anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
She will speak in favor.
Just, does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in September of last year. As you can tell in the pictures, the property is not secure. The improvements have not been made. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
Mr. President, you have one more to, some favor, who wants to speak?
My name's Brenda L. Rodd, and I live at 130 New York Avenue in East Gaston, and I live next to the house. I've lived there 40 years this May. And my husband passed away three years ago. He started working on trying to get this house torn down because no one's lived in it in eight to 10 years. When I do call regarding this, trying to get something done, they'll send someone out and they'll work on it for a while, I guess, just enough to cover it or whatever they need to do. But, when they start that, I do not have bugs or rodents. But, when they start working on the property, I get those problems. And they mow, they'll mow, they let the grass get pretty high, and they'll mow it once or twice during the summer. When they do that, I get the bugs and the rodents, you know? And, like I said, I've lived there 40 years, and I've done a lot of upkeep, and my children try to get me to move, but it's my home. So, it would, and transits live in there during the summer and winter. And when I come home at night, you know, I see them coming out the door and stuff, and this is scary to me because I live by myself. And I have started carrying a gun because of that. And so, I appreciate it, get taken care of today.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the Pledge of the Council?
Make a motion to abate the nuisance, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 303 Winston Street in District 3, Robert C. Reed and wife Kristy Reed being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started working this case in January of 2013. There've been no improvements to this property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the Pledge of the Council?
I'll make a motion that we abate this nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1015 Seventh Avenue in District 5, Herman Thomas, wife Leslie Thomas, and Doshi Maria Thomas being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of last year. Been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the Pledge of the Council?
That's, this house is in my district, and this house is directly across the street from my daughter. And my wife and I were sitting over at her house one day last week. Somebody in a truck backed up there and scavenged the house. So, you know, people complain about us tearing houses down, but I tell you what, you live next door to one, and see, don't you want it torn down? So, I make a motion that we abate this nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 325 Wilson Street in District 6, Joe Ray Johnson and wife Opalene Johnson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of 2013. There have been no improvements to the property. There were two demolition permits taken out by the owner, one in 2013 and one in 2014. There's been no visible work done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. As Mr. Harbison just informed us, two demolition permits have been taken out in the past three years. They had to do anything. I've been watching this house. Actually, go down the street. I go to church right down the street from it. There's an eyesore to the whole community. There's churches in the whole street there, and these people deserve better than what we're giving them right now. If you got a house, you don't care about it, just let us tear it down. There's needs coming up here trying to prolong stuff like people's doing. This has been going on for three years. We should have done, got this house. Like Councilman Billingsley just said, people's just running through them getting stuff out, anything they want, and it's just leaving there as an eyesore for the city.
Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 78 Cousa Street, Etna Ross, the State of Alabama, and Sarah Mae Murray being the last known owners. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,414.92. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution appointing members to the Harrelson Architectural Review Board. This appoints Stephanie Wagner for a term expiring September 15th, 2017. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That's, that's in my district, and I think the young lady will be an asset to the, to the board, because I know the other people on there are a little bit older than she is, and I know she looks a lot better than they do. So, glad to have her. Why don't you stand up and let everybody see you? Thank you.
All right. There's no other discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have two, Mr. President. The first one, I ask for unanimous consent on a resolution authorizing agreement with the YMCA for the Sixth Street pool.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the votes?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
I have one more, Mr. President. This is a resolution, well, I ask for unanimous consent of resolution to amend Code of the State of Alabama 45-28-244.01.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
On the discussion part, this is a 1% sales tax board, and we are asked in the Etowah County Legislative Delegation to present legislation that would take most of the money and divide it proportionally for, since District 28 has more territory, where all of his district is in Etowah County, and the other two districts have some, but most of it is outside the county. So, we would just like to have it divided proportionally, please.
Yeah. As Councilman Worthy has mentioned, this, the sales tax is collected, and the 1 cent sales tax is collected, and it's distributed equally right now amongst three districts, District 28, 29, and 30. What we're asking is that the delegation submit a bill and support a bill, introduce a bill that would allow for a proportionate based on population and based on where the taxes, the taxes generated, that it be distributed proportionately based on those items so that those taxes that are collected in Gaston will be utilized in Gaston.
You should say, too, that, that there are other two districts have, like, St. Clair County and Cherokee County, and this says all the money should be spent in Etowah County because that's where the money comes from.
Right.
And I think it's only fair that it go that way.
Yep. Sweet. Good point. Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm 100% with you. I say it's fair to do it that way. Where the money's come from, we need to spend it here, but I think we're going to have trouble with some of those people on to give up some of their money. But I hope I'm wrong.
No, indeed. So, it becomes, it becomes a question of fairness and equity, and we'll see, we'll see where it gets, but I think it's clear. We're asking them to support and introduce a bill. Okay. If there are no more comments, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Mr. President, I have two. First one is Resolution 71. It's a resolution appointing Kim Gilbert to the zoning board of adjustment for a term ending May the 18th, 2017. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, my next resolution, number 74, is a resolution for memorandum on cell tower applications. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Oh, yes. Did I mispronounce that? Well, in my case, it is. It's a moratorium. Is that right? I beg your pardon, Council. Once again corrected by Jenny. That's good.
That's quite all right.
How far along in this thing am I, anyway?
Now, we're ready to vote.
We're ready to vote. Hey, man.
You were about to move to adopt.
I'm about to move to adopt that.
I'm on second.
Moratorium.
And we have a motion to adopt and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I would say, without mixing my words up, this is going to give the planning department a time to get our completed regulations together.
And it's a, it's a brief moratorium, I guess I should add.
Well, I don't know what that is either.
All right. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I'll add that, you know, it's, you know, moratoriums are possible, and they're, and they're common in the event that we, you know, have a purpose behind it. So, but we've been instructed legally, we can't arbitrarily, throughout moratoriums, but we do have that flexibility if there is a purpose there.
That's what I'm after, flexibility.
I like that. I like that. All right. Is there any additional new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for, as a resolution authorizing agreement with advanced disposal services for the removal of non-hazardous solid waste at the landfill located on Lookout Mountain. It's the old landfill up on Knocklil Mountain, up there where the practice fields are.
Okay. We have a motion to consider. Do we have a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I make a move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, this is for the transportation disposal of the non-hazardous solid waste at the old landfill. It's not to exceed $14,900, which we had some digging done up there, and we're just trying to get some of it hauled off. We're all going to try to do some of this in-house, so hopefully it won't cost us the amount we're thinking it will.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business? Okay. Department reports, committees, boards, Jeremy?
Yes, Mr. President, I just need to make an announcement. FEMA has released the new updated firm maps for review. These are the maps that decide whether you have to pay flood insurance or not. If you are a citizen of the city of Gaston and you have property in the city of Gaston, you may review those maps in room 301 between 8:00 and 4:30. A 90-day appeal period began on March the 8th. Just go ahead and tell you, we have hundreds of parcels coming into the flood hazard area in the city of Gaston and hundreds coming out. So, if you pay insurance now, I would suggest that you come take a look, if you live near the river or a creek or a drainage way, that you come take a look at these maps.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Now, we're down to the part of the agenda where we accept a citizen's request. Mr. Fuller, are you here?
Good morning, everyone. Me again. I appreciate the opportunity to advertise Theater of Gaston season. We're having our first show opening this Friday night, and we'll be performing the next two weekends, Friday and Saturday nights at 7:30 and Sunday afternoon matinee at 2:30. The admission is $12, general admission, $10 for students, seniors, and military. And we've revamped the rest of our season. We've got, we've got a good slate. The next show, which has already been cast, I think maybe in rehearsal, is Smoke on the Mountain. It's about good old southern gospel music. Really a funny, funny show. And then this summer, we'll be doing the famous musical Oklahoma. And then early fall, we'll be doing a comedy, Greater Tuna. It's about a bunch of crazy people in Greater Tuna, Texas. And then, and then around October, we'll be doing an evening with Edgar Allan Poe. And in our Christmas season show will be, it's A Wonderful Life. It's not the one you're familiar with, like the movie, but it's a radio version, as if it's been as if it's being performed on the radio. In addition, we've got two children-themed shows this year, one of which is already in rehearsal, Rumpelstiltskin, and then later on this year, Jack and the Beanstalk. And both of these shows, we're planning to have students from various schools come in to see the show. And this is part of our outreach to the theater. This show this weekend, we've got a wonderful young actor. He's been in several shows now. He was, had one of the lead roles in Kill a Mockingbird, Dion Green. And he's turned out to be one heck of an actor. I think I spent all that. It's like, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Remarks by the mayor and the council? Mayor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go to the podium. I'm going to talk about seven fifty-nine. And I will invite over channel ninety-nine watching to maybe understand, because there's a lot of flood in that project, which is not correct.
Okay, alright.
Before I say that, I want to say, the Theater of Gaston, my wife and daughter went to the Kill a Mockingbird in Monrova, where Harper Lee, who wrote the book, Kill a Mockingbird, they have a stage, and they perform it all the time, professionals. And then we went, I went with them to the Ritz and saw what you guys did. And they said it was as good or better than what they went to Monrova to see on a class trip. But anyway, so we appreciate what you do, please. We had a MPO meeting the other day, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's to do with all the road projects, highway projects that are located within Edwah County. And Mr. Harris with Aldot said that seven fifty-nine was dead, and it was because it was classified as a four-F impact. And what that means is environmental, is what they said. Environmental does not mean that it has environmental waste. It means it would impact historical houses, okay? And that's why they called it off. So I'm gonna go through some points. This may take a couple of minutes, but I want you to check this out. Earmarks for I-759 connector from George Wallace Drive to Megan Boulevard, four thirty-one at US two seventy-eight, in the amount of thirteen point eight million dollars, and one point two million originated in a T bill. A limit on obligation reduced the spending approximately ten point four million dollars. From ten point four, nine million was obligated to construct the I-759 bridge over the Coosa River. The total cost of the bridge was seven point seven million. So an additional earmark in the amount of two point seven million appropriations bill was received to complete a corridor study in final design phase, as well as to start right away in acquisition phase. In August twenty-twelve, two thousand six, appropriation was lost due to the funds being unobligated. We couldn't spend the money because we couldn't get past the corridor studies. After hearing about the loss of the two thousand six appropriation, the city called Mr. Don Arkel to gather information on funding for the project. He explained two hundred and forty-four thousand remained in our engineering budget, as well as a million four remained as unobligated for any purposes. So roughly seven million dollars was taken from our original earmark, and currently there's no earmarks from Washington, but nobody bothered to inform us that they had taken that money and put it somewhere else. And my question is, who got it and where did it go and why? We were never notified. Anyway, the project impacts the local economy. You got Gaston's largest employer, Goodyear, sixteen hundred employees. It's located on Megan Boulevard. The city and state worked together to secure incentives to keep Goodyear here, and they spent about a hundred and twenty-five, and I'm saying it's probably up to around a hundred and fifty million now, on planning expansion. The city's second-largest employer, Gaston Medical Center, with approximately twelve hundred employees, as well as numerous healthcare offices, serenities located off Megan Boulevard, and this project is directly impacts this development. The city's largest commercial business, Walmart, and adjoining strip mall on Megan Boulevard, and recently added a new development, thirty-one million dollars development with a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of retail space and about five hundred new jobs is next to the Walmart strip mall. Gaston State Community College is at the end of seven fifty-nine, with seven hundred employees and fifty-four hundred students. And this also directly impacts that project. The city of Gaston is in the process of a riverfront development project with over twenty acres located on George Wallace Drive. In two thousand and twelve, the traffic count at the end of seven fifty-nine was twenty-six thousand five hundred vehicles. And Megan Boulevard, four thirty-one over the bridge and all, was thirty-five thousand vehicles. On George Wallace Drive, it was nineteen thousand five hundred vehicles. Traffic counts on four thirty-one have remained about the same once you get on out. But that's a total in two thousand and twelve of eighty-one thousand cars every day in about a mile to half-mile radius. Eighty-one thousand. And it's worse than that now. I'm sure that was three years ago. Anyway, we believe people are having to cut through the residential neighborhoods to find all these ways to get out of the traffic. Every day about eleven-thirty or twelve o'clock, you can look out my window upstairs, and Megan Boulevard on the Megan Bridge is bumper to bumper, and usually Broad Street is too, after a little while. Anyway, the preferred route chosen by the community and supported by the city has three four-F impacts, which means, you know, you probably can't do that. All three impacts are historically eligible areas. A nineteen twenties residential historic district, the Alabama School of Trades or Gaston State, and Star's Housing Authority. According to the archaeological report performed by the University of Alabama in two thousand and four, the only impact to historical structures was in the nineteen twenties historical district, where approximately twenty houses have to be moved. And that has to pass the historical association's approval. The right-of-way acquisition for the preferred route would not, would not include any contributing buildings with the School of Trades or Gaston State, or the Star's Park Housing Authority. So anyway, we move on, we get down here, and along with the avoidance route, a no-build option is always included in everything. I'm sure that's just a way they can get out of doing the project if they want to. The avoidance option is deemed prudent and feasible if it meets the original need and purpose of the project. Now here's where we were at a certain time since I've been in office. The federal person that our, was, we were working with in Washington, he liked the route. The neighborhood liked the route, all the people liked the route. The money was supposed to be there. He, he was about to approve it, we're told. He retired, or got sick, I don't, but anyway, he retired. So they put another person in, and he didn't like that route, that everybody wanted the cheapest, straightest through, least invasive and all that. He thought that we should build a bridge off of a bridge, and do a tunnel under Gaston State, and come out over somewhere down there past the chicken plant. I never could figure out that. So that told me then, somebody's killing this project. Somebody's killing it. So who makes the final determination on the feasibility and prudence of routes? If a true avoidance route had been found, it was deemed not to be feasible and prudent. Why is the no-build option being considered as opposed to preferred route of city and community leaders and the MPO? So anyway, we move on down. Does this mean Alabama, or any other state in the union, will no longer consider doing a project that goes through some nineteen twenties housing? I doubt it. There's a project going on now, the Northern Beltline Bypass. I probably shouldn't say this, but I won't say it. It's billions of dollars and finish up sometime, and it'll probably be more billions, but it'll finish up sometime in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five. Why don't we use that money and help everybody throughout the state? And let's fix these things where people need something, and there's also a lawsuit on that. Who knows if it will go through or not. It may be stopped, but they're going right on with that billion-dollar, multi-billion-dollar project. Anyway, the city and the community are on the same page where it concerns the project. The positives of the project far outweigh the negative impacts. The community is being held hostage on what to do with their properties. For about five years, people have been on hold. They didn't know where to remodel, upgrade. They thought somebody was gonna buy their houses. And there's only twenty that will impact. It would go right beside the Junior College. It'll go through Bowman Transportation, which is vacant, except for some buses that's over there. It'll go through the Boys, it'll go down, I believe it's Taylor Street, get twenty houses, through the O'Boys Club, and behind Cory Schu, which is a vacant field. So it's not gonna impact very much at all. But anyway, Aldot officials, Federal Highway, Historical Commission, we had a meeting with them in two thousand and eleven, and the neighborhood was on board. We were on board. Everybody was on board. The lady from the Historical Commission, who does the, if it's gonna be a bad impact, like they're talking about four-F, she said, when she heard about the tunnel, that was the most ridiculous thing she ever heard, for them to call her when they got serious. But she also said, the current route that we all want, she said, it's fine. I've told you that three times. So there was really no reason to be saying it's a four-F situation, because the historical lady signed off on it immediately. So, I mean, you know, the idea that it wouldn't qualify is totally false. My question is, Aldot has budgeted a hundred and fifty million per year for the next ten years for capacity projects, which equal one point five billion dollars to spend. The governor and the, our local legislative delegation need to make this a high priority to find twenty or twenty-five million to get the next phase approved. And, you know, we can sort of go along till we get it done. I'm asking our local delegation, get the facts that I have. I'm asking the governor, who has complete control over all the money in the Highway Department, and all the money in ADECA, the two big pots of money. And he can tell the Highway Director or whoever, put twenty million on this, and that's what they gotta do. He controls that by himself. We need some help in Montgomery, and I hope everybody watching doesn't mind calling the delegation, writing letters to the governor, or whatever we need to do. He's been here a bunch of times and likes it, so we need some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I wanna just really echo, you know, while, while, you know, the mayor has done, I think, an excellent job of outlining, outlining some, some essential points to get people to understand kind of the evolution of this project. Couple of things we have in our favor is, one, money was appropriated at one point for this, for this project, through earmarks. So that, that should, and, and, and at some point, we hope, will continue to weigh in our favor as we, as we, as we continue to lobby for funding for this project. You know, the second thing, and I, and I think the mayor said it a couple of times, and I don't want that point to be missed, you know, the ball, this, this issue lies with the governor's office at this point. The governor has the ability to, to make the decision relative to, to whether or not the, the funding is allocated for this project. Now, what you may hear some people speak to is that there's no long-term transportation bill, so it's difficult for the state to do any long-term planning. You know, all, all those things are true. That, that is definitely true. Congress does need to pass a long-term transportation bill, so there can, there can be some planning, so the state will have the ability to plan long-term. But in the short, in the short run, while they're continuing to use the money for maintenance elements, and have indicated that they won't do bridges, and they won't do capacity projects, they do have the flexibility to allocate funding for this project. And so what we really want the governor to understand, and to, and we want Mr. Cooper to get on board with this as well, is we want them to understand that this is an important project for Gaston's long-term development. And, and this is in one of our, this, this impacts our main thoroughfare, the main artery running down the center of our city, and, and it's important. What separates, in our, and I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit more, but when we had our discussions with our congressional members on last week, one of the things we had to remind them of and highlight in each of those meetings is that what differs, what this project differs from other projects, that they're being asked to, to lobby and advocate for, in that this, this one was actually funded. There were earmarks that, that allowed funding for this project at some point. Most everybody can't say that. There, we, we, we were, we were made aware of a project in Mobile that's supposed to be of high importance. The difference between this project and, and that project is, that project's never had earmarks, or, or, or funding earmarked for it. So again, we, you know, I, I almost sound like, I feel like I'm sounding like a broken record as it relates to this, because again, the mayor's outlined a lot of very valid points. You know, I don't, I don't want to get into this name-calling element, but the, but the gentleman, but the gentleman at the FHA, who made the determination to, to, to make the issue of, of this, of the historical element, is making this a political football. Is pretty much what this project has turned into. Simply because, again, the, the young lady from the Historical Commission was very clear. There is no four-F issue. There is no issue relative to the, to the historical impact. You've got twenty nineteen-twenty, I mean, again, you've got twenty, seventy, eighty-year-old homes that'll be impacted. So, you know, again, if we think that in this day and age, especially in this city, that we're gonna engage in a large-scale project, and it's not gonna impact some older homes, we are sadly disillusioned. That's gonna happen, you know, but we are sensitive to any real historical impact, but to this point, there is none. So I, I want to thank the mayor for laying out the points for everyone, and I know a copy of his talking points will be made, made available to the media. For those that are very interested in this, please follow up, read the articles, you know, look at the, the tape of, of this, of the mayor's presentation, because this is an important project for us. And again, we're, we're going back and forth between Congress and the, and the governor's office, trying to get something done. So, so, so again, again, I want to thank the mayor for, for sharing that information with us. Mr. Eccles, Councilman Worthy?
I have a couple. Speaking of the Washington trip, we sent in a briefing from the two senators. They didn't meet with us, with our delegation. We had to meet with their staffers. And everybody's blaming it on, just like the mayor said, seven fifty-nine project on the state. So they're sending money to the state. It's up to the governor and Aldot to decide what they're gonna do with it. So on that note, when we were sitting in the briefing at eight-thirty that morning, they was talking to us, Shelby and Sessions, and I, I was embarrassed sitting there, because all they talked about was our president. They blamed everything on the President of the United States. And I wanted to get up several times and leave, but my president wouldn't let me. So we, we sat there and took it. But it's sad. In accomplishment, they, they, they just talked negative about it. And then, when we did have people to ask questions, they pounded to the voters, and they, they really didn't answer the question, because I guess they're that good, they've been doing it for so long. They just skirt around the issue and talk about something else. But then they left. But then we sat down, and we, when it was time for us to meet with them, we met with the staffers, and, and they told us this and that. But anyway, overall, it was a decent trip, but we wasn't able to get them to commit any monies for, for the state. And the highlight of it was I did get to shake the president's hand when he came and spoke to us. It was the first time the sitting president since nineteen ninety-four, something like that, came and spoke to the League of Nations.
Cities.
The cities, the cities. But I'm gonna talk about, I want to commend the police for the quick work and the response to the shooting we had on Broad Street over the weekend, Friday night. But I'm gonna also have to say something negative, because I got a call to come down to the hospital, because one of the persons that was shot, they wouldn't let his mother in, the hospital. And I understand, you don't want anybody talking to him, I understand that. But, and it was hundreds of people out there, but we don't live in a third-world country. This is the United States of America. And if a parent doesn't know if their child is alive or dead, you have to have empathy for them, and let them in, be able to talk to the doctors or the nurses, so they can let them know if they have allergies or whatever, going on, what kind of medication they taking. Because if you shot, I'm sure that the kid was in shock. And then the other kid that ultimately passed, his grandmother was out there. And you know these people are upset, and they wouldn't let her in the hospital. So how can they get the proper medical care if they don't know if they allergic to this, allergic to that? So I'm gonna ask and request that the mayor talk with the chief and change that rule, because that's crazy. I can understand not letting all those other people in, or clearing the hospital out, because there were so many already in there. But we have to figure out a way to let the parent come in, into that hospital. And I'm not saying go back there and necessarily see the child, but talk, be able to talk with the nurses, other doctors, without them having to come outside to talk to them. So that definitely needs to be changed. That's all I have to say.
But before we, before we move on to Councilman Billings, let me, let me, let me say something. But before we move on to Councilman Billings, let me say something really quick as it relates to that. I think at this point, I would really encourage us to bear in mind that there is an open criminal investigation at this point. And I just, I suggest that at this point, that we really do everything possible to make sure that we're supporting that active criminal investigation, and as elected officials, that we be careful not to do or say anything that could impede the ability for them to prudently and effectively follow through with that investigation. So again, I'm not in any way indicating that anything you've said does that, but I just want to be, want to be clear. Each of us will have an opportunity to speak today, and I just want to make sure that we don't do anything to impede the ability for them to follow through with that investigation. Also, from a public safety standpoint, you know, I just think it's important for everyone to know that there are a number of issues that we are consulting legal on as it relates to, and this happens anytime you have this kind of incident. We're looking at ways to prevent this kind of, this kind of issue from happening ever again, and to prevent this kind of thing from taking place in our city. You know, we have ordinances on the book as it relates to business licenses. We have alcohol licenses, ordinances on the book that we can utilize to address this. We also have, you know, there's been some discussion in the past about eliminating certain types of businesses. So again, you know, the community should realize that there are a number of things that are being kicked around, but right now, what's most important is that we support the activities related to that criminal investigation.
I got one other thing. I went to, also went to the candlelight vigil they had the other night for the young man that passed. And when I talked with the group out there, I asked them, if you truly his friend, you need, and you saw what happened, to speak to the police, because it's several, I know that said, you know, talking, said they seen it, but they haven't came forward to talk to the police, and we need all of them to come and share what they seen to the police officers, because that's the only way we're going to be able to make the arrest on the subject that perpetrated this crime. And we, as a city, we have to come together to make a safe place for our kids, to be able to have fun, so we won't have this to happen again. It's just sad all the way around. Thank you.
Councilman Billings?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
I'm back.
Okay. All right, I did want to make a, give a, just a brief report of what we advocated for and discussed while we were in Washington. And again, I always want to thank, you know, the citizens for entrusting us with the ability to go and lobby for everything that's, you know, for lobbying for those things that are important to our city. If you recall, you know, and I've said this a couple of times, I actually boycotted the Washington trip one year, because I was just so frustrated with the, with the method in which that whole process works. And I warned those new members of the council who went with us that it would be frustrating to some degree, and they got to experience some of what I had talked about. It's very frustrating to walk out of those offices having pleaded your case and not really get a significant number of commitments, or even some, you know, out and out, just tried to dodge the issue altogether. But a couple of the things that we addressed, of course, we talked about seven fifty-nine until we were blue in the face. And of course, so that's, you know, everybody from DC to Montgomery knows that seven fifty-nine is an important topic, and there will be some future discussions and meetings as it relates to that, for sure. So I think that therein lies some positive element. We got their attention as it relates to seven fifty-nine. We discussed also the airport and some of the job development activity that we are engaging in as it relates to the airport, in particular, developing new or building new hangars out there to support the National Guard Brigade. The long-term transportation bill is another item that we talked openly with the, with our congressional delegates about, you know, we really, really need a long-term transportation bill so that the state can do some planning as it relates to its transportation projects. Without that, they're just having to engage in maintenance activity, which makes the ability for us to lobby and secure funding more difficult. Tax-free municipal bonds is something that we talked about. It was kind of interesting. I directed this question very specifically to Senator Shelby, who basically assured us that it wasn't at risk, because he didn't feel like anybody had the appetite to talk about it. So our tax-free municipal bonds are safe for a while, so we'll continue to use those as effectively and responsibly as we can to make sure we fund our big projects with them. And again, one thing you have to remember as a taxpayer is that if we don't have that tax-free exemption on those municipal bonds, our debt costs significantly more. It's a huge impact, and it makes some of the projects that we've engaged in not necessarily feasible. Last thing I'll raise is that we talked a lot about e-fairness. You'll hear more from us about e-fairness, because that's an important element for cities all across this nation. It's basically a tax on internet sales right now that we're not collecting. And all we're asking Congress to do is to raise the issue, bring it up, so that it can be addressed, so that it can be passed, and so that we can build a structure and infrastructure for collecting that, those taxes. If we were not, if we had e-fairness, or marketplace fairness, as it's been called in the past, if we had that in place now, we wouldn't be worrying so much about what the governor's going to tell us as it relates to funding of I-759, because we'd have some additional revenues to do that kind of thing with. So again, that's why that's important, and also the impact to small mom and pop businesses is important as well. So again, that just kind of gives you an idea. We always want to, if you send us up there, we want you to know that we're not just going up there for the benefit of a trip. There are some reasons, some very relevant items that we're addressing while we're there. Okay? All right? If there's nothing else, I make a motion that we adjourn.
One second.[1765.42]